Please take the roll.
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy, the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have two presentations tonight, both internal staff, which is nice. Ms. Hipsey and Ms. Jones. I think Sally's here, isn't she? I thought I saw her. Oh yeah, right there. Counsel, if you guys want to go ahead and come up. Counsel, for the fifth year in a row, the Finance Department has been awarded the Certificate for, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. You might have heard about the CAFR Award the last five years. And we've been awarded that again, the fifth year. We're required by law to have our books audited by an external auditor, and that's the only requirement. But Nancy and her staff go one step beyond that, and they take, they create an additional version of the audit that's more transparent and easier to read. And they actually present that to a professional organization, and it goes before a review board of peers. And it's actually some award criteria, and it's the highest form of recognition in government finance. And there's, I think, it's kind of like Kalia where there's only a small percentage of organizations that apply, and of those, you're not guaranteed to get it. And we've been awarded the CAFR five years in a row, and it is an impartial group that does the voting. And what they talk about is they want, the intent is the spirit of full disclosure and easy-to-read finances. And so it's all about transparency. And Nancy runs the department, but I understand Sally does all the work. But I do want to, we have gotten the official award of financial reporting achievement, and it's being awarded to the Finance Department. So thank you, and congratulations.
I would just like to thank management for their support. If they didn't help me prioritize this, I wouldn't have the time that is necessary to fulfill this. And Sally is a great help. There's a lot of statistics, schedules, that are at the back of the financials that she's very instrumental in completing. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Lori. Got another award for recreation. I'm gonna have Lori explain this one.
Okay, stay close. All right, our department is active in the Nebraska Recreation and Park Association, and we're extremely proud of working here in Papillion and the support we get. And so on behalf of our department, we submitted an award for you that I'd like to take the time to read. This municipality is being nominated for their progressive and creative approach to parks and recreation in their community. Quality of life for residents is one of the main focal points in the city's mission. The city's mayor, city council, and city administration have exercised complete support of the city's parks and recreation staff and their programs, which in part has led to two national award recognitions in 2015. The city was named second best place to live in America for towns with a population between 10,000 and 50,000. In addition, they were also named the fourth best place to live in America for veterans. This city has appeared on the top 10 list of best places to live in America since 2005, and much of the success from these awards are due to the quality of life in the extraordinary parks and recreation programs, events, facilities, amenities within the community. The mayor and council continue to support parks and recreation by taking risks with new events. This year, the city sponsored Slide City, event in cooperation with downtown businesses to place the world's longest slip-and-slide through the heart of the city. The event brought over 8,000 visitors to town and generated donation in excess of $5,000 for their new veterans park. The mayor and council are also strong advocates for the parks and recreation programs in the community, as they recognize the impact on the community's economic development with the success of their programs. Sumter Amphitheaters now drawing large crowds with several national touring acts. All season long, the race series comprised of six separate race events brings over 10,000 running and biking enthusiasts to the community each year. Papio Bay Aquatic Park is still a major destination in the metropolitan area, and our farmer's market brings a steady flow of people weekly to the city of Papillion. And Papillion Day celebration and Winter Wonderland events draw spectators twice the size of the community. Parks and recreation are alive and thriving in this city due to the support of the officials and the city administration. So on behalf of the Papillion Parks and Recreation Department, we would like to thank you for your support, for all the things that we're able to do in this community because of you. And... Here's your award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to begin my report this evening by advising you that the Parks and Recreation Committee that the mayor appointed, the Community Parks and Recreation Committee, held, I believe their sixth meeting last week. That committee is comprised of, the mayor describes it well, a 15-year-old representative from the mayor's youth council and a 75-year-old senior citizen, and everything in between. They've been working dutifully for the last six or seven months to really identify the potential scope and size of a community center in the future. They're winding their work down, and now have really passed the baton on to another group of the council committee, council members Mumgarth, Florence, Gaines, and Stube, to look and review an operational plan. And those four council members are going to be, they met with us for an hour earlier this evening, and we gave them 30 or 40 pages of documents to look at, and they're going to vet those and challenge our assumptions here in the next couple of weeks as staff, and then reconvene in a couple of weeks to make sure that we're doing due diligence on that operational side of the, a potential park and rec bond that would go before the voters in 2016. So a lot of work where, you know, Lori did a very good job. By the way, it doesn't happen without you either, Lori. I know that. Great job. We'll continue to move forward and continue to try to always get better as staff and bring those proposals. Second mayor, I'd like to just advise the council, that Councilman Glover is the chair of the Public Facilities Committee. He's been working with the library for about the last year and a half. He'll be meeting next week, Monday, I believe, with Library Board Trustee Sue McCallum, Chris Myers, who's a director supervisor of the library, and Becky, who obviously is the director. What those folks are doing is trying to reach consensus on how to best allocate that $650,000 that you put in for capital expenses. We did have some programming, but I think you'll see some changes, maybe not substantive, but what's the best way and what are the highest and greatest needs at the library over next, the next year? And Councilman Glover and trustee McCallum, Chris, and Becky will be bringing that recommendation to the council for consideration in January of this year. I'd like to conclude my report this evening, Mr. Mayor, by a little bit of an anecdotal story. I've been married a long time, 30-plus years. Years ago, my wife and I decided I would not help put up the Christmas tree because I don't have a lot of patience to string lights. I tell you that because as I sat there Saturday and watched that countdown, it just seemed simple. 10, 9, 8, and these lights go on. We all know it's not simple, but some of the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read you a list of the names. There were 16 employees. I asked Tony Gowen earlier today, said, "Give me the name of every person that touched a string of lights." On there, and when I would see them working around the city, I would say, "Hey, make sure you tell your wife you don't have to do this at home." And they said, "Okay, we're gonna have her call you with that." Here are the individuals, and if you happen to know some of them, and I just think their names need to be publicly recognized. John Sevillis, and these are all parks employees, some full-time, some part-time seasonal. Bob Bowjen, Dave Clusaw, Mike Newzall, Rocky Limming, Mike Cunningham, John Krebs Jr., Chuck Wigan, Jason Allen, Caleb Berenclaw, Jose Contreras, James Ingberg, Eric Rosemon, Bill Gorman, Mark Kirchner, and Mike Simmons. And of course, Tony led that group. They put up, if you weren't aware, 130,000 Christmas lights, or lights, when you went 10, 9, 8. And that's about an additional 10,000.
I thought you were lying.
You wanna take that call, chief? We'll wait for ya. But I'd like to give those folks a round of applause if we could. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion?
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1730. An ordinance to amend in its entirety Chapter 81 alcoholic beverages of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the hours of the sale of alcoholic beverages, to repeal such section as it has heretofore existed and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Gaines. Next is item F1, Ordinance 1729. An ordinance to amend Section 9-1 of Chapter 9 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to provide consistency with Section 9-4C of Chapter 9 and Section 130-2 of Chapter 130, having to do with the Library Board of Advisor selection of the intellectual collection displays or presentations, to amend Section 9-4A of Chapter 9 of the Papillion Municipal Code to provide for the election of a vice chairperson to the Library Board of Advisors, to repeal Section 9-4E of Section of Chapter 9 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to eliminate the annual reporting requirements set forth therein, being consistent with the city's operation of a Chapter 16 library and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1729? Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
It's the time of the year for reorganization of the council. One note on that, everybody got an updated letter on committee assignments, and tried to accommodate everybody's request for a committee to stay on and if they wanted to change. So those committee assignments are effective as of this council meeting. And then the other thing is item F2, Resolution R150194. A resolution to elect a new city council president for a term of one year. Is there a motion to open nominations for council president?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Please vote. This is for the motion to open the floor.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
The floor is open to nominations.
I'd like to nominate Jim Glover.
Jim Glover is nominated.
I would nominate Jason Gaines.
Jason Gaines. Any others? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close nominations for council president?
Vote.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We do have more than one nomination, so we will revert to, we'll go with the standard practice of paper ballots, if you want to pass those out. I know we've got a number of students in the audience. Once a year, we elect a council president. The function of the council president is to fill in for the mayor when he can't preside it or a meeting, or if something happens to him, they become the mayor. And it's good for one year. You'll notice we're doing a paper ballot. Everything else we've done has been a public vote. This is the only time we do a secret ballot of everything we do. The election of the council president's a secret ballot, so. The, we've, also, since students are here, we have eight council members. One of them is missing, but for a majority, we have to go with the number of elected officials, not the number of people here. So a majority is five, even though there's seven here. So it does take a majority to have a vote carry, and we have a 4-3 vote. And according to Chapter 46.6, Item B of our city bylaws, the, while the vote can be secret, the count has to be part of the minutes. And so I'll go ahead and announce those. Four for Councilman Glover and three for Councilman Gaines. So we do not have a majority, so we need to revote. We have five for Councilman Glover, two for Councilman Gaines. Councilman Glover, congratulations, you're the new president for the next year. Thank you very much. Next is item F3, and I want to thank Councilman Florence for serving as president for the Oh, we do? Okay. We do have to move forward with a, with the resolution to elect the new city council president for the term of one year. So is there, can we do it by acclamation? Cannot. It's gotta be a vote. So is there a motion to approve the election of Councilmember Glover? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Mumgarth.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is item F3, Resolution R150198. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter of Section 32 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southwest of Highway 370 and 114th Street. The applicant is Ashberry Creek LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R150198?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? And the applicant is here.
Nancy Pridal with Lamprein Yurson on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We have several Ashberry-related ones. Item F4, Ordinance 1705. An ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as part of the northwest quarter of Section 32 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southwest of Highway 370 and 114th Street, from agricultural AG to multifamily residential R4, and to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1705?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. We do need a motion to amend 1705 to only include Phase 1, as it was represented in the staff report. So is there a motion to amend to Ordinance 1705 to only include Phase 1? Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Please, do we have proponents on the motion to amend? And the applicant is here, I'll make note of that for the record. Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
And so the motion is amended, and I'll go ahead and call for proponents and opponents again and again, recognize that the applicant is here. Anybody want to speak on behalf of the motion as amended? Any council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next, item F5, Resolution R150199. A resolution to approve the Ashberry Creek subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R150199?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have proponents? Again, the applicant is here. Any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, could the applicant's attorney, Representative, come back up, please? Maybe this is a question I should have asked on the final plat, but it's a question that, as I sit and look at the final plat, this is the second half of very nice development out there, Ashberry Farms, right?
No, actually, it's a separate development. This Ashberry Farm has another phase that's not, this is east of Ashberry Farm.
Okay. I drove through Ashberry Farm the other day, which is next door to this, and there's still a significant number of lots available there. How does this compare, then, to Ashberry Farms?
So this is actually, if you think about the three developments in the area that Jerry Torzon's involved with, the developer, as well as John Allen, Ashberry Farm is 500,000-plus. North Shore, north of Highway 370, is the 325 range, as far as house valuation. Ashberry Creek meets the middle of those two at 400,000. So there's some folks who have expressed interest, some buyers, to be in Ashberry Creek, but they can't get to the threshold of the 500,000-plus. North Shore's a little bit intense in regards to use with the Ball Diamond and the school, and so then they were, but they're also looking to be a little bit upper scale, so that gets you to the 400,000 range. So there's a, there's a missing middle between those two valuations that the developer believes is looking for and wanting to be in this location.
Okay, and that's where I'm going, is I'm questioning, why are we doing this? Why are you doing this now? That, as you've mentioned, those two developments, same guy, same developer, North Shore, it's amazing how fast they're going in. You drive through, and there's houses popping up all over the place. Ashberry Farm, very nice places, but still quite a number of empty lots. And so when I see this sizable development come in, I'm asking myself, well, why are you doing it now? What is happening? Kind of, does this indicate some change in the marketing or in the expansion of Papillion? Is this, as you say, you've indicated, this is going to go with a middle marketing pool? Your people, your homeowners are some, somewhere in between the two? What kinds of things did you consider to decide now's the time to do this?
They are seeing a need now for that price range, and so that was the impetus to get this started. And you'll note that instead of doing the entire development, they've really phased it down to only include 85 lots, so it's a smaller development, not the larger developments that you've seen in the past. And they, there's a need now for that type of house, that they're getting, people coming in, but they can't get to that $500,000-plus range. Some of the homes in Ashberry Farm are, you know, getting close to the $750,000 range, and it's just out of reach, but some folks have expressed interest to have that same type of feel and development. So Ashberry Creek plays off more on the Ashberry Farm feel and development style. The lots are bigger than North Shore as well. They're smaller than Ashberry Farm, but bigger than North Shore.
Well, I've historically been impressed with the Torzon developments and the wisdom apparently he's been showing in when to do that. And so I'm not against this, but I was wondering if I can read anything from this as to what the current situation is in Papillion for increased development. I mean, we're coming off of a stretch when we didn't have any development, and now I see something like this, and I'm thinking, well, do I get a signal here that things are turning around?
Well, I think North Shore's been highly successful, and they, we're already into Phase 2, and North Shore, they're going to a bond issue with it, from the SID, and again, but then there's some folks that just don't want that high traffic that you get with the grade school and the middle school. So I think that the message is that there's a place in Papillion the developers see and need for that 400,000, which is a very nice home, but there's a place in the, a need in the community for that, but not the more over-the-top valuations that you're seeing in Ashberry Farm. Ashberry Farm will be a slower-developing community than North Shore or Ashberry Creek.
And I trust that this doesn't detract or take, take buyers away from Ashberry Farm.
No, because the homes in Ashberry Creek are, would not fit the covenants of Ashberry Farm.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Stube, did you have a question?
I did not.
Okay, go ahead and please vote.
Yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F6, Resolution R150200. A resolution to approve a sewer and water connection agreement with sanitary improvement district 304, Ashberry Creek. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R150200?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any more council discussion?
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. We don't believe any committees, standing committees met, and again, new committee assignments were given out today. Everybody who requested to stay on a specific committee, those were accommodated. A couple of people requested to shift. Those were accommodated, and then a couple of people said they didn't care where they went, and they became the plug items of where I needed to fill. So thank you for your flexibility, and I think everybody got accommodated. Also made change to half of the audit committee philosophy there. Believe that there's a value of having a consistent set of eyes on the books from an audit perspective, because you can see trends year to year. And so two of the four people remained on the committee, but also believe there's wisdom in getting a new set of eyes on the books. And so that's, thus the logic of a 50% turnover on the audit committee. So if you had served on that, thank you, and if you're new to it, thank you for that as well. Any comments from the floor? We've got a lot of students with us. You guys get to come up to the podium and introduce yourselves, and they all sit and stare at us. Up, up, up. Introduce yourself and let us know why you're here. Assume most of them are high school class, but share with us.
I'm Tyler Thornberg.
You can start forming the line.
I'm Tyler Thornberg. I'm here for Mr. Keller's class, government class, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Austin Williams. I'm here for government class. And let me say, you all doing a great job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
My name's Jacob Doherty, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's honors government class. Attend a public meeting and learned a little bit more about how the city works.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Strohmeier. I came here for the government class, too, and I'd like to see what's going on in the city.
Come back. No, not now, to another meeting in the future.
I'm Jaden Torbenson. I'm for honors government, just learn more about the city and what they do.
I'm Abby Curry, and I'm here for Keller's AP government class, and I just wanted to see how these meetings work.
I'm Grant McGrath. I'm here also for Keller's AP government class, and I just wanted to learn more about how our government works.
I'm Kylie Hancock. I'm here for Keller's AP government class and to see more about the city.
I'm Maggie Peters. I'm here for Mr. Keller's AP government class, and I'm here to see how the city functions.
Hold on a second, because a lot of people have been saying that, and I haven't asked a question. What'd you learn?
From this meeting?
Yeah.
Well...
Put you on the spot.
I didn't know that you ran the meeting, so I thought that it was someone else, so that was something.
Cool. Cool, thanks. It's one of the only things I get to do. You notice I never vote, so I didn't do anything.
I'm Isaac Thielbold, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's AP government class, and it was nice to see how this compares to our national government and just how the local government works.
If you don't like what we're doing, you see us in the grocery store and you can come up and talk to us. Local government's probably the most effective thing because of that.
We have a balanced budget.
And we have a balanced budget.
I'm Noah Gooden, also from Mr. Keller's AP government, and I'm just amazed how fast you guys are.
I'm Shelby Miller, and I'm also from Mr. Keller's government class, and, yeah, just to see how the city council works.
Thank you. And you guys are welcome to come anytime and speak your mind on any topic. Mr. Hoynes mentioned, we've got a citizens committee looking at a future community center, and we actually have a 15-year-old representative on that, and they're a full member of that committee. So, you can get involved, and if there's anything ever on the agenda you want to speak your mind on, when we call for proponents or opponents, you can come up and speak. So, thanks for coming out and being part of the process.
Mayor, can I comment for a second?
Mr. Mumgarth.
I was struck by how many of the students say they're here because they're really interested in how we work and how the city works. But then I also noticed how the numbers of students that attend seems to increase as the semester draws to a close. So, I sit and think, well, good, there's something about December that makes everybody to be good citizens.
Thank you again. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Jaworski.
I just wanted to say hats off again to Tony Gallin and his crew for Winter Wonderland. That was awesome. It was cold, there was a ton of people there, and my wife even came this year. I was impressed with that alone, so it was a good time. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Just a few things from the last couple of weeks. Went and spoke to third graders at Walnut Creek. Also attended an Outlook Nebraska banquet. Good organization that works with blind and low-sided, trying to teach them job skills and, and put them, and get them to work, and really good organization for the community. Also attended a meeting of the Parks and Recreation Steering Committee. I believe Councilman Glover was there, Councilman Ingberg, Councilman Jaworski, Ms. Klug was not there at the last one, but the council had a very good meeting there, and I think almost every citizen representative was there except for maybe one. Also, again, thank you for Winter Wonderland, Tony, and a big thank you to the foundation as well. They help with a lot of that organization of the actual evenings events. A lot of other groups participate as well. It's hard to get an estimate of how many people attend that, because it's so spread out with the downtown businesses and the fire station and right there. But I don't think it's a stretch to say there were probably 4,000 people there, easily, and with that cold weather. So, that's turning into a great, great community event. And that, that was competing with Omaha's lighting that night and the bad weather. So, very big thank you. There was a lot there. Also had a meeting this afternoon with Ben Justman, who is the director of the Sarpy County Historical Society, along with Brenda Carlisle, who's the president. They were, they put in for a grant, well, program. The Smithsonian Institute has a traveling exhibit called "The Way We Worked," and it's only being shown in about four or five cities in the, in Nebraska, and it's traveling the nation, and Sarpy County is one of those. I put a flyer at your desk with those events. They're having a grand opening on December 9th for the "The Way We Worked" Smithsonian event. But the one I really wanted to note is December 19th, a Saturday at 2 o'clock, they're actually going to do a historical walking tour of downtown Papillion, because again, this is an 1870s railroad town, and so, the Smithsonian's talking about that. They've done research of the plats, and they're actually going to visit about 10 of the buildings, including City Hall. So, if you're available to come out for that, that would be a great thing to support. Also, we've got another one of the vacant buildings downtowns recently sold, 213 North Jefferson. And from what I understand, I don't think it's public yet, but I understand one of our downtown retail businesses is going to be expanding. So, again, the momentum down there just continues, so hopefully they'll be making an announcement in another month or so. I think that was most everything. Mr. Jaworski, you had something, didn't you?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other council comments? Yes.
I just wanted to comment about the library and the fact that this year I went over there, and it was so packed. We were actually in where all the books were. We, they had expanded their craft area, and it was absolutely packed with people laughing and having such a great time. And I know that's kind of a challenge to have glitter and glue all over the library, but the people that were volunteering in there were making it fun for the kids.